What? Do you have the mic on?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, can you hear me?
I had it on mute.
I can hear you fine, Clinton.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on mute until we get to you, if that's all right.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda.
Okay, as you know, the consent agenda has some items in there, we can make one motion to approve everything. Uh, we have minutes from our last council meeting. We have the accounts receivable that we've had here the last couple of weeks. The third item, you have the three-year comparison for the golf course. Quick update on this, or a little background on this, Andrea put this together, I think our auditor's recommended and the city council asked a couple of years ago to do this. So the first meeting of every month Andrea puts these graphs together that compares the current year and the previous two years for revenues and expenses at the golf course. And then you have the cash balance report, which is another graph here, that was dated last Friday. And then you also have your accounts payable. Andrea, do you have anything in accounts payable you want to bring up? I have a couple, but I bet they're gonna be the same, so you can go first.
Um, the only ones I were gonna, was going to point out, um, there was a loan payment to the bank, um, for the 2016 street project, that was for the street lighting, that was about thirty-six thousand. And then the other one was to Bolton and Mink for, um, some engineering fees for the four street project yet. Otherwise, everything else is routine in nature.
Okay. And I guess the only thing I had to add was about, most of the way down page two, you'll see there's two checks that were written to the DNR, Minnesota DNR. Um, that is for the annual water permit that the water department needs to pay to the state based on the amount of gallons pumped per year.
Mm.
And then a couple of lines down, the golf course also needs to pay a water permit to the DNR every year for the gallons that are pumped through the irrigation system. And that's what those two are. That's all I have, if anybody on the council has any questions.
I would move the, uh, the consent agenda.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lee Clinton, you had spoke about, or we had talked a while ago about the golf course doing a three to five-year goals list.
Mm-hmm.
Have we touched base on that yet?
Yeah, we can do that.
That'd be great.
Melissa's talking about, it was maybe five or six years ago, um, a couple of city council members, Scott and I, and a couple JGA members got together and we put together a little five-year plan for the golf course. I can put, I'll put that report together to show you what those items were and how they were addressed.
Thank you.
We can do that.
So we'll see if the five-year goals got met?
Yep.
Are we gonna do new, new goals then?
We could, the golf board could.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
I think maybe we should do that during our work session that we're looking at doing, I think that would be a nice agenda item for that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Could we let, well, you, you guys have a board meeting coming up, is it before our work session?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, that's five o'clock.
Okay, and the work session is what day?
Five-thirty, sorry.
Do we?
Oh, perfect. Perfect, 'cause then we can have it, you guys can have it presented then. Or we can do vice versa, whatever you think works, but, thank you.
Public forum. Anyone here to speak through public forum? Dan?
Okay, Dan Sice, uh, 21 West Third Street, owner of the Janesville Bowl. Uh, I was gonna try and get up here last night, but my family took me out for my birthday, so I didn't make it. Uh, I'm here because of the article that was written in the Journal on Wednesday, January sixth. Where the CARES Act funds were mishandled through Southern Minnesota, did you all get the Janesville paper?
Mm-hmm.
Where a lot of the money, like North Mankato, not one penny went to small businesses, and Ellendale was the only town that gave out a hundred percent of their money. And nothing was said in here anywhere about Janesville, but I had heard that there was money that was still left over and was put in somewhere else.
Oh.
Well, during this second closing, I was the only business not allowed to open. So during that whole time, at least some of the, you know, like the Goose and other places were allowed to be open, so during that time, I'd never, I'd lost close to twenty-five thousand and lost revenue, and then I'd find out through this article that money is going somewhere else into the city, and I'd, I guess I'd like to know why and where is it, and why wasn't all given out.
I know, I can. I can speak on the EDA's behalf, um, with those, we had a lot of revolving loan funds that we were actually able to turn into grants, so that they didn't have to try and pay that back. Some of that money that we received from the CARES Act went directly to the EDA so we could help support other businesses, um, including businesses that were hurting at the time. Um, other money went to, if I can remember correctly, this whole system, which we were able to keep people informed virtually, even when the city hall had to be shut down. We were able to increase the security and sanitation processes for just about every department, including the golf course, the ci- city hall, police department, um, utilities, I think every, just about everybody increased all of their sanitation and security parameters. Um, gosh, and then wages, we were able to work on that, so that way people were compensated for all the time it took towards creating this process for COVID relief. Um, I don't know, I'm probably missing about a hundred things, but I think we spent to the penny every, everything we had. So I'm wondering if that wasn't done.
Well, that's why I was.
Prematurely?
Most of these cities were using a loophole, which they weren't supposed to. This wasn't supposed to go to elsewhere, it was supposed to go to small businesses.
Oh, no, we, we only used it in Janesville, for Janesville, one hundred percent of it to Janesville. In fact, we had numerous meetings where we learned and discussed why we were gonna spend every penny, because anything that we didn't spend went right back to the county, and we didn't want that to happen. We wanted to make sure it was spent. So every penny that I know of was spent in Janesville for our businesses.
But was it to all the small businesses that were down, closed, that's what I.
We were able to accommodate every business that applied for a grant and/or loan in some way, shape, or form.
Okay.
And all of them, we, we accommodated in some way, shape, or form. The EDA was extremely proactive, and there was unanimous support from council to do that, to.
Well, I had the article, and some places never got any of it.
You know, if you want, I can forward you some of the, um, meeting minutes that addressed exactly how we split it up in the EDA, 'cause the EDA had several meetings over that time in which we went over the amount of ways we could utilize those funds, and which we did utilize them too. If, if you want, I, I don't know, just to bring you some peace of mind.
It'd be nice to see after we do.
Okay.
A portion of the CARES money went to the EDA, and the EDA dispersed it to the local businesses, it didn't come directly from the city per se.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty percent of the CARES money went to the EDA.
Thirty percent?
And the EDA is who dispersed it to the businesses.
Mm-hmm.
Is this a complete list of every, all of our CARES dollars up here, Clinton?
This is here, yeah. Yep.
That's a complete list of where all of our CARES dollars went, Dan, I don't know if you'd be interested in getting a copy of that?
Yeah.
We can do that for you.
'Cause we got, what, a hundred and forty-five thousand?
One seventy-four.
One seventy-four, had that a little backwards. And, I mean, you and Andrea, Marley, Sarah, you guys spent hours just combing through the many ways that we could legally use those funds without, there were so many parameters put on the way you could use those funds, that it took them, yeah.
It wasn't, it was mishandled and.
Oh.
The loopholes were being removed.
They spent probably a good two weeks just trying to figure out what the parameters were before they could even present it. I mean, it was, there's a lot that went into it, so, but I know we spent every penny on our town. So, yeah, we could get you a copy of that, no problem.
Andrea, did you get a phone call from the, uh, journalist that wrote that paper, that article?
Yes, I did, I spoke with him.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Asking questions on how money was spent, and did you notice Janesville was not in that article, so we must, we must have done it right. Yep.
So, this was, was that just outlining the ones that did not?
That the journalist interpreted as.
Yeah, I guess when I read it, I didn't even.
Not you, Michael.
No, I didn't even think twice about it when I read it, 'cause I, I knew we spent the money accordingly, so I just, but I could see how it looked that way, no.
Well, that's why I said the element was earlier when they came out on, it was just in the one.
You're like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for your comment, Dan, we'll be sure to get you a copy of that. Anybody else wish to speak through public forum? Public forum one more time. We will close public forum.
Just a second.
Can you talk about this already?
We have not yet. But it is on our list, and that will be in our new business. Would you like to speak on it now, or?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna move along then.
Okay, Dave, if you can hear me, um, I have your fourth quarter police report for 2020 on the screen, if you can see that.
I can.
I'm gonna hit, I'm gonna hit mute, so we don't, you don't have to listen to me for a while.
Sounds very good. So ladies and gentlemen, we have here is the fourth quarter report for activities of the police department. Um, I was asked to start providing this on a quarterly basis rather than year end, which has been working out pretty well. Um, Clinton, I can't kind of control the up and down here, but you can see, uh, predominantly the, the majority of our part one and part two crimes that were reported to the police department throughout the year. And we had a total of, uh, two thousand and seventeen calls for service throughout the year 2020, which was down from 2019, and I, I believe that a lot of that was due to COVID and the stay-at-home orders that we had throughout, uh, throughout most of the year of 2020. Um, you can see that our arrests for the third quarter were thirty-eight arrests for various criminal offenses. Um, and the other significant thing is the courses that have been, uh, cases that have been referred to the court, we still maintain about a ninety-six percent conviction rate for any, uh, cases that have been referred and disposed of through the court system. Um, so that's kind of the highlights of it. I've also provided, um, the fourth quarter stat sheet for every seat, which basically breaks down the activity report of all the calls for service during the fourth quarter. So, uh, these are the calls that we've dealt with, and I guess I would entertain any questions if anybody has any.
The weapons violations, is that increased from last quarter? Yeah, 'cause the, the activity is still broken down, so I know some of these are grouped together, but it seems like that's, the narcotics and weapons violations have increased, is that correct?
Can you hear Melissa, Dave?
No, I did not, you were muted, so I couldn't hear anything.
Oh, good call.
I can, can you hear me now?
Can you hear Melissa now?
Uh, well, she's a little bit muffled, so you might have to help me with the question.
I was just inquiring, and it looks like the weapons and narcs has increased from last quarter, is that accurate?
Okay, weapons?
I'm so.
Weapon violation and narcotic violation increased, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
What page is that on, do you know?
He has it detailed on the first page, but then the, the breakdown, the, on the activities is a lot more specific, so I know it's kind of grouped up, but I just, that just caught my eye.
The one thing that everybody has to keep in mind is, let's ta-talk about narcotics, for example, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that, that is the number of suspects that we dealt with, because many times what happens is that somebody is arrested and there are several various charges for narcotics, and the way our records management system works is each one of those charges will represent one of those calls, or one of those numbers that you see.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave?
No, thank you for putting this together again.
Absolutely.
All right. I think we're done with Dave. Yeah, Dave, I'm gonna keep you on for just a second for the administrative report.
Talk about squad car, you can be here for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, council reports.
You want me to mute again?
Uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We have any council reports, or haven't had any meetings since the last one, so?
We have a golf advisory board meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth.
At five, that's a Wednesday?
Yep.
At five-thirty.
And we'll have two new board members, uh, there for the first one, so we'll kind of go over, getting them squared away, and we'll, uh, look into that, three, five-year goals, what we can do there, and I'm sure Scott will have some numbers for us for the, um.
Deck project?
The deck project and, uh, membership drive, I'm sure.
Wonderful.
Yep. That's the plan.
Sounds good.
Stan.
Anything else on council reports? Don't think so.
No, I think we gotta get a personnel committee meeting together at some point, but just haven't gotten in the works of doing that yet.
Yep.
But we'll get there.
Mm-hmm.
Administrative reports.
All right, on the screen I have the administrative report for this packet, um, you have the January bank statement, and you also have the cash balance report, which you actually saw earlier, this is the number form. Um, the new police squad is now on order, and I was just gonna explain to everybody here, uh, last December the city council did order a new squad car, and what we do is we, we have a three-year replacement schedule to replace our squads. We have found over the years that when scout, squads get to be about two or three years old, they become money pits, so we try to replace every three years. We have a, a capital reserve program in place where we transfer so much money every year into an account, so we're able to purchase that squad every three years without, you know, increasing taxes. Um, Mark is here tonight, Dave is here also on the phone screen, if you guys have any questions. Kind of process that we go through with the squads? Talking to Mark, uh, what, three hours ago? Um, you put in some more orders, some equipment and things like that?
Yeah, all the equipment is, uh, ordered now, uh, so that will take four to five weeks to get everything done, so we're trying to play that time. Time to get it all right, so the squad should show up, and you'll be able to show up at the same time. You know, it's, that's the possibility, I have not considered, they did, the squad targets.
In case you missed, Dave, Mark said that some of the materials ordered today will be four to five weeks old.
Yeah, and we, we kind of planned it that way, simply because, uh, the last word we got was that the squad would start to be built in February, sometime in February, which means eight to twelve weeks delivery time, so we try to have everything on hand when a new squad gets in. Mark is kind of our setup guy, and he does a lot of the work on the squad, so it's kind of nice to have everything ready to go once the squad gets here.
Any questions from anybody for Dave? Thank you, sir, I'm gonna cut you off, 'cause I, we're gonna be done zooming, if that's all right.
Oh, that's fine, thank you folks.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Next item. Uh, our next city council meeting works for our fire chief, we would propose that we have a township fire board meeting. Um, what the township fire board is, is we have representatives from each of the townships that we serve, and they come to meet with the council a couple times a year. We go over budgets and run reports, um, the equipment that's needed for the department, we'll have an update for you on our rescue truck that's been ordered. Um, so we just do that a couple times a year. Anyway, we normally have those meetings on a city council night at seven o'clock, so it's usually the first item of business, and then when we're done, the township folks can, you know, can leave, they don't have to stick around for the whole meeting. So, just so you know, it does work for Chief Switzack, so we will have our first meeting this year on February twenty-second at seven PM. All right?
Are we able to accommodate everybody with the arrangement we have these days?
I would think so. I mean, we may have to limit some staff that's not involved with the township fire stuff, but as they leave, maybe others can come in then. I think we should be able to work.
So that will be our next council meeting?
Yes, our next council meeting, yep.
Very good.
Um, and then just a couple other things, administrative reports, uh, a couple weeks ago, a, a member of the House of Representatives called and, and asked, um, to supply a letter to the House Transportation Finance Policy Committee to talk about the importance of the state budget, putting money in its budget for small cities and their streets and infrastructure.
I thought this was a nice letter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, uh, I put that letter together, and the coalition, Greater Minnesota Cities, of course, they helped, but yeah, we got that out in pretty short order. But, uh, anyway, I just thought I'd give you a copy of that letter, in case anybody asks you what I was talking about. I just basically said, please give us money.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly, please give Joel money, that's what I should have said. He likes money. Um, lastly, the coalition, they do, they do have their weekly brief that I put in the, tonight's packet, and just so you know, Marley and I are gonna be zooming tomorrow morning with the coalition, they're putting on a little, uh, a little program or information on the childcare cri.
Is this in Minnesota?
Um, childcare issues are gonna be a main focus of our EDA this year, so Marley and I figured we'd sign up for free zooming and learn more.
I'm excited to hear how that goes.
Yeah. That's all I got.
All right. And we want a motion to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
I will, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Department heads?
Yeah.
Joe and Nate here?
Pretty much clearly informational media, actually, or, uh, your representative to the council, of course, I have some information on, uh, personal reasons, whoever's, um, most of our time is spent on, we had a fender come in for the AMI, okay, infrastructure, and that's what we've spent most of our time, I think, on that. We'll, 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 next month, we're gonna rehash the shelter system. Well, the only update I have is the delivery of our, uh, dump truck, something, you know, um, so we have that.
Looks nice.
No dent?
See that?
No dent, no dent, scratches? Yeah.
All right, moving on to old business?
Yeah, old business, item number one, as, as the council knows, um, I've been participating in the training that the League of Minnesota Cities does for the newly-elected council members, probably about halfway done with it, I'm getting a, a bunch of, um, very useful information, so the training is done at the end of this month, so I would maybe like to see if we could try to set a work session date for March, kinda, you can learn the ins and outs of city government and kind of how budgets work and.
I can forward you the stuff that, or my materials too.
Okay.
Just to see.
Um, can we set one tonight?
Yep.
Or do you wanna wait till the next meeting?
I, I am unavailable eleven to fifteen, other than that, five o'clock.
Okay. Let me ask you this, do you wanna do it in an evening, or do you wanna do it like on Saturday morning?
I'd prefer an evening.
Okay.
Okay.
We looking two to three hours?
I, you know, we could, something like that, I suppose, yeah. Maybe start at six or six-thirty, start a little earlier, if that, if that's all right.
That'll be fine, yeah.
Well, when is, our council meeting would be the eighth?
March eighth and March twenty-two would be the council meetings.
Do we wanna look at the first?
Yeah.
March one?
Monday, it's, you do, Monday before the council meeting.
First is the Monday.
Yep.
Yeah, I can do that.
Andy?
That'll, that'll, we can make it work.
That work for you, Jimmy?
I'd like the second, but the first is worse.
You'd like the second, huh? I don't have a problem with the second either, I guess.
Works for me.
Um, hold on, first Tuesday of the month?
Monday, first Monday.
First Tuesday?
No, first Tuesday.
First Tuesday, all right.
Well, the second is a Tuesday.
Let me check the.
I don't.
I'll look on the calendar.
Um, Janesville Township uses this room that night, the first Tuesday of every month, so they'll, they'll be in here.
First is it?
First?
Monday the first?
Monday the first?
Okay.
What time?
Jimmy?
Well, ain't a difference to me, six-thirty.
Okay.
Six-thirty it is, six-thirty on the first, three-one. All right, we're gonna move on to new business.
Motion on that, or?
I don't think we do.
I can.
Chair appointment.
I'll, uh, I'll just officially notify the newspaper when our meeting is.
You just did.
There we go.
New business, uh, we got new fire department officers.
Yes, um, every year during the February monthly meeting, the fire department votes on their officers for the year, and just kind of as a formality, the city council will approve that list. So attached in your packet tonight would be the officers that were elected last week for the year. Um, there are no changes in the list.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Moving on, the road behind Park Road?
Yeah, Andy asked to, I'm sorry, Andy Arnold asked to put this on the agenda. Um, I know some of you have had some questions about the road out there. Um, behind Park Road Plaza, there is a minimal maintenance road that was platted on top of a twenty-foot utility easement years ago when Northwood was put into play. Um, it's basically an emergency access right-of-way, which means if you have a house fire or an emergency on the other entrance to the subdivision, people can still get in and out, okay? And it's for, technically for emergency vehicles. It has been used quite a bit over the years, as we all know, so from time to time residents will ask if we would ever make that a street, and I guess my, my quick, simple response to that is, no, we can't, because in our city code, residential streets need to be thirty-four feet in width, this is only a twenty-foot right-of-way, so we couldn't even put in a standard city street there. Um, there's water main underneath it, which would need to be dug up, if we were to do, put a road in, more than likely we'd need to get dug up, maybe.
I was gonna say, is that the one that gets really flooded?
And if I can just point out, there's a corner of this red, the road right here, um, it's actually on someone's private property, and that's, I mean, that'd be a extra steps to go through that to, to get access to the land, you know, to purchase the land to make and that's why the road is that narrow, because we only have a twenty-foot, uh, right-of-way there. Should I show anything else? Is this map enough, or? Can you see my mouth? This is, this blue line is the water main. So it basically goes right with that road, as you can see.
It'd be a quickly expensive fix in order to make that into a road. It's not a matter of just paving it and moving on.
Correct.
I see what you're saying.
Yep. And I know, Andy, you had had the question, so we put it on tonight's agenda, just so I could kinda give you guys-
Yes, I had Andy a question, because I had a citizen ask me.
Yeah, yeah.
With some of the other streets in disrepair and our limited budget, I don't think that this would be real high on the priority list, but I did say that we would talk about it.
Yeah.
So we're talking about it.
Well, and if we don't talk about it, you don't know.
And it, I mean, there's drainage issues on it, like it, it's, I'm gonna make it, it's what it is. But I wanted to do my due diligence, and I said I'd bring it up, so we did.
Yep.
And we're gonna move on. Does somebody, anybody else has anything on it?
No.
Okay, Clint has a, a new form he wants to talk about.
Yes, um, I'm gonna put it on the screen here. I know the Utility Commission is thinking about this, and I'm, I'm gonna maybe ask the EDA to think about this, too, but in order for meetings to, to be prepared for a little better, and so that staff has time to put agenda items together, I would suggest that we develop a form, and I know Nate, Andrea and Nate, you guys are doing the same thing with the Utility Board, but to request a form that, that residents can fill out if they wish to be on our agenda.
I understand that.
I'm gonna say that, I couldn't give you a percentage, but over the years, there's probably been a large amount of residents coming to ask to be placed on the agenda, and we can simply answer the question for them, rather than having it be a city council meeting, if that makes sense. I think if we have this form in place, that will help. It'll help staff, anyway. Um, if you notice on our website, we generally say that we'd like to start writing our agendas, you know, the week before the city council meeting. So on the bottom of the sheet, we would ask that, if a resident asks to be placed on the agenda, that they come in here five days before our city council meeting, which would give staff plenty of time to, to do the research and get things prepared for the agenda. Um, if the city council is okay with this, I think it'd be neat if we could maybe put it in effect March first or April first, or something.
Is there something we're gonna make available on the website, or?
Yeah, we could.
Get it online and email it in?
And I'm not an expert on some of that technology stuff, so I don't know if it would be a fillable form online, but at least-
Runnable.
I still don't, we don't have fillable options, so-
Okay, so we're not gonna do that.
Is he still, or is it because like the setup of your PDFs, or just the website doesn't allow for that?
Um, might be a little both, but we don't, we don't pay for the fillable, yeah.
'Cause I was gonna say, um, I have access to fillable documents from my graphic day, so I can make it that way if you want. Free.
Yeah, but then, I mean, are they gonna fill it out on a Wednesday night instead of five days or four?
(laugh)
You know what I'm saying? Yeah. I don't know if they're-
I don't know.
Yeah. I do have a little post-it note of ideas I have to share with the council, okay?
Okay.
Generally speaking, for agendas, and this goes for really any public body, but, um, city council members, if you get a request, this would automatically not be on the agenda, but city councils are not allowed to like fix tickets, or to tear up parking tickets. You know, city councils are not allowed to be a judge. You just need to know that, because I, and I know it's kinda funny, but I, over the years, there has been those requests where people will call me saying, "I got a parking ticket during the snowstorm, I don't wanna pay it, I'm gonna go to the council." No, the council doesn't, the council doesn't fix those, okay? So that's a general rule. There are some items that simply are not public information, that we cannot talk about at city council meetings, okay? You know, there's obviously human resource issues, health insurance issues, you know, things like that, that we just can't talk about, so-
There's been people that have flat-out wanna know what people are paid here, and they've come here asking, flat-out, like,
Yep.
"What are they paid? And I wanna know right now," and it's like-
Yep. So there are some items, even though a, a resident or whoever a group may request to be placed on an agenda for something, it would be staff's job to say, "Uh, sorry, we can't talk about that in the public." So just so you know that. Um, and then the only other general thing I'd like to say is that the city, which includes city staff and city council members, in many cases, we cannot fix disputes between neighbor and neighbor. We can't fix disputes between property owners. You know, if a, how many times over the years have we gotten complaints and gotten questions about, "Where's my property line?" My, my neighbor is throwing his or her snow on my property. Uh, that's, some of that stuff, as a city, we just, we can't resolve those issues sometimes. So there are, there are times where I see, if we have this form, a person may fill something out saying, "My neighbor Andy does this, and I don't like it, fix it." No, that's not the city council's job. Okay, does that make sense?
Maybe like educating our residents, too, before they go to fill out an agenda request form, like what it means to have an agenda item, and what it means to just express in public forum. 'Cause those can be two very separate things. 'Cause this would place them on the schedule.
Yeah, this would put them in the business, or whole business.
Right, so if it's something small or anything like that, where we could say, like, "Just come to public forum."
Yep.
Direct them otherwise.
Well, and a perfect example, when, when, I don't know if I can say his name, but when he called you about the road.
Yeah.
He could've filled this out, and then you would know, this would be in your agenda. It would be the person's handwriting about what they wanted to talk about, so, yeah. Are we okay with this form? Do you want us to-
I like the form. Do you want action on it, or?
That'd be great, um, and then with the date.
March first.
First, I will move to approve the agenda request form.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, we're gonna talk a little about the snow removal on the sidewalks. We've had some issues lately, and-
Yes, um, Andy, Andrew came in last week, mayor. Can I just say mayor?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mayor came in last week, you know, 'cause your two on my, on my phone, right next to- I accidentally call you.
Nope.
I didn't mean to call him. I didn't wanna talk to you.
Well, if you start yelling at me, I'm gonna-
Then you'll know, you'll know which man you're here.
I'm gonna have to ask you who you-
He starts yelling.
Yeah, you got the wrong Andy.
He always got the wrong number, 'cause he wouldn't yell at you.
Oh, but you don't know, Jim.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of things, all in the category.
I'm just kidding.
Um, okay, so we do, our snow removal policy in place states that, um, property owners are supposed to remove the snow off their sidewalk within twenty-four hours of the snow ending, you know, the snow event ending. And the policy then goes on to say, "If that is not handled, then the city will remove the snow from the sidewalk."
If, if a little-
Begging the simple fact that we just- Snow off sidewalks. And some- So a couple options to look at, and all, you can, you can pipe up here and include yourself here with what you guys do in Mankato, but a few years ago, this was brought up to the council, and the city council then asked staff to treat this sidewalk issue- Snow.
Mm-hmm.
So we do-
Between mailing and the seven days, we're just not getting action done fast enough.
Right.
True.
So a couple options we could do is, I mean, A, if you do want, if the city council wants the city to remove the, the snow off these sidewalks, um, A, we don't have the money in the budget this year to buy the needed equipment. Fair enough, Joe? Or if you would like, I know, like Mankato, for example, will write a letter giving people one day.
Nope.
And then when that one day is up, then the city will, they have a contractor that, that removes the snow for them.
I thought we had budgeted to get more equipment to do the sidewalk.
Not sidewalk equipment, no?
Why did I think we did? Okay.
Sidewalks are five feet.
Right, yeah. So was it just like, 'cause I remember- I remember talking about it with you, 'cause it was a couple years ago, like right when I started, that we had this presented before, and we talked about what you would need. Did it just fall through?
Well, I think we were kinda directed, like, uh, style council, maybe I would mention, you know, having like a voice belt or somebody do it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And then-
Just never-
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
As the Works Department, would you, is something you're even interested in? Or would you rather we looked at a private contractor to do it and just leave you out of it? Well, the funds ultimately would come from the bills to the homeowners for not doing it.
Right.
So essentially, it shouldn't cost us.
Right.
Obviously, we, we'd be responsible for the contractor, we hire it. How we go about getting paid, the different story.
You guys hire most, you know, the contractor, hire that out?
Yep, there's, um, our surveyor, in the wintertime, obviously, he's not surveying, so he drives around and, and documents everything, and he gives all them addresses to the contractor, and-
Okay, 'cause yeah, that's the other side of it, is we always have to treat it as a complaint-driven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we wait for a complaint, and then send a letter and such. Um, but if you wanna move more towards, uh, if someone else follows, you make this, that kind of appear, doesn't matter what.
Well, I don't know that we wanna task you with that, as much as maybe we could make it complaint-driven. And we may not have the easiest time finding a contractor willing to do this, either. I know it's really tough finding people right now.
I think the only thing that would suck, too, if we did it on a complaint-driven basis, is that I don't think not everyone knows or is available to call or contact when they notice these things. Like, if, if I use myself as an example, and I wasn't a council member, I get home, five o'clock, city hall's closed, I have no one to call at that time. Yes, I could shoot an email, but by the time I think of it, after my kids and getting everything else set to go, I forgot it, and then I'm ticked off again the next morning, when I go out and I see it again, and the same cycle continues. So if there was an easier way to do it, because I remember, it was Mr. Kaminsky that had brought it up, his kids were trying to trudge through three-foot drifts of snow, and it was freezing cold like today, and it, it made me absolutely angry, because I-
Yeah.
That was, it was unacceptable, like, the pictures that I got sent were unacceptable. And so then, I think it was another resident actually stopped by and saw kids stuck in the snow. "Oh, my God," and I'm sorry that happened.
Would you come up and state your name and address?
Um, my name's Jennifer Cousins. My kids walk from Carol Steiner's house every single day, except if my husband's not working. The same exact houses, this year, the year prior, the year prior to that, are the ones who never clean their sidewalks. Now, if the sidewalks are not cleaned, the kids have had to walk on Main Street.
Which is dangerous.
Which is dangerous for a, she's now nine, but she's been walking since she's been in kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
Now, my son, who's in kindergarten, is now walking with her. So, to me, I don't think it's a hard thing for a resident to clean their sidewalks off. And even if my kids start walking from my own house, I'll come and I'll complain about the people who don't clean our sidewalks by our house. They just happen to be cleaned today, but the storage unit, not cleaned. So then they're walking on that busy sidewalk. The Denza's house, not cleaned. You know, like, it's not fair to these kids or to the parents, who either their kids don't go to SAC, or they're old enough to be walking, it's not right that they have to walk in the streets.
I think that's fair. That's fair, and it, it, I would hate to see this happen as a, I would hate to see something bad happen, a kid fall down, or, or worse, you know, walking on the street. Um, it is snowmobile season, too. I mean, I know my neighbor has his rear end to go at six in the morning sometimes, it's insane, but it, it just, we-
Mm-hmm.
That, that's what I mean, is we need to, we do need to be more proactive, unfortunately. Uh, I don't know that it's necessarily feasible, but we might just have to make it be-
What do you got for suggestions, Andy, you deal with this?
Um, I think, I think that we should try and find a contractor, and I know that this year's probably gonna be hard to do that.
Nope.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that if you, uh, if people see an extra fee on their utility bill, that they'll become a lot more proactive on getting that done.
Can we bill it that way?
Well, or do we just send an invoice out?
We would have to send an invoice out, giving them a timeframe to pay it. If they don't, then we would assess it to their property taxes.
Oh, property, okay. I know that there's different avenues to do-
Yep.
Yep.
After a couple bills, people probably get the shovel out, too.
Yeah.
Right, right, or call to see how they could rectify it.
Okay.
It's not fair to the people that do it all the time.
Right.
'Cause then, you got three houses where they're cleaned off, well, I mean, it's the small things that-
So what are you thinking on timeframe?
I like one day.
I would say, a day.
But, I mean, we can't use a day and then send a letter. I mean, a letter, it goes from Minneapolis to Mankato, back to Janesville. So now, you know, if you figure that day plus your mail time, now you're four days into it. She's stuck in the snow.
That has nothing to say that, uh, we have to send a letter. That is saying, if the sidewalk is not-
We can just claim, send somebody out.
Probably through Work Department, we'll clean it. We do not have to send a letter according to our, our format, yeah. We simply go in, and if it isn't cleaned in twenty-four hours, if we do it, we bill it.
And then-
That says-
Yep.
I agree with you.
I agree as well.
We don't have to notify them according to policy.
So then we try to find a contractor that can do this, right?
We try to find a contractor, as well as I would like to somehow get it out to people, that this is our policy, and we're not sending a letter, you might get a bill.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
So they're not shell-shocked, I don't know.
Well-
If we can include something with the utility bills.
Yeah, like a notice just saying, "Hey, guess what?"
This is our new policy, and this is how it's gonna be handled.
Yeah, you will not receive notice if we come to clear it, you're getting the bill.
The current-
That's gonna do that for us.
The current policy you're looking at right now, I believe the residents have seen about four times this winter already, haven't they?
It's on our website, we posted on Facebook, um, it sent, it got sent out with a quarterly newsletter in the last year.
But we're now making a change to the policy.
Right, and I'm just saying what we have now in place, yeah.
Yeah.
But yes, we can send it as an additional flyer in a utility bill and post it on our Facebook page again.
Do you think that's a good way to do it, Clint, there?
I think so, 'cause I, I like to-
I'm trying to alleviate a bunch of people coming in here screaming at you guys, 'cause they didn't even-
Wow, I, yeah, I mean-
That's a day in the life.
It, it honestly happens, I mean. Yeah.
But it's, it's gonna be the same, it's gonna be the exact same residents.
Yes, it's gonna be the same.
Year in, year out, snowstorm after snowstorm after snowstorm.
If we're able to find a contractor, he'll pretty much be able to make a route out of it.
Yes.
Gosh, absolutely.
And I don't think it's gonna take much, and then they're gonna go off.
You've done rounds, I don't know, I bet you the, the twenty blocks that haven't been cleaned since the last snow, which was a while ago.
Yeah.
And they're all, and you're at the same one. It, it, if that, if I'm observing that, I don't get in every street in town, there's probably thirty.
Yeah.
Which is a lot of blocks that haven't been cleaned.
Mm-hmm.
And that puts residents and children in jeopardy. That's not a cop.
I live on a lot and have property on a corner, like, I don't know. It's just hard to, it's hard to feel bad, like, 'cause I, I'm doing it, and I work during the day, so I'm getting it done.
And it's, it'll get dicey, 'cause people are gonna show up that live on the outskirts of town, where a lot of kids aren't walking by their house, and they say, "Well, you know, the sidewalk never gets, I live on, on the last street, you know, who's gonna, so there's, there's gonna be people that are certainly gonna complain over that, but-"
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Like, we walk, we walk all over town.
I was gonna say-
Every street in town, you're on one lane.
My whole block, everybody has a dog, everybody. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, there's always traffic, so.
So do we want to make this a policy tonight, hammer something out? Do you wanna make something formal, and we'll run it through next meeting?
Do we try to, do we connect our brains together and see if we can find alternatives?
Yeah.
Switch all that over, I think that was, I'm sure it went off, but it was right around twenty thousand dollars. For that whole, how much?
Twenty.
About twenty thousand?
Yeah, that sounds- Plus the additional labor- Plus the additional labor we're spending, I would personally rather hire a contractor.
Also got a free up of personnel.
Exactly.
How they've been, uh.
Yeah, do you have to RP for that?
For Facebook, what they're doing.
I can find that out, yep.
Cause I, I, I would help you all RP, you can add that language.
I can do that. Joe, do you have the, I mean, do you guys have the, do you have the time to do it? Do you have the manpower, do you?
I mean, if you talk, I mean, it's meant of snow.
Right.
Uh, obviously, but.
Cause I'd hate to deprive you guys of, uh, a lot of other more important things.
Well, the next day typically, you're hauling out snow and.
Take this last snow, for instance, I mean, you got a few inches, but then it kept blowing and blowing and filling and filling, I mean, yeah, it is like, whenever it's kinda ceased, but how do you make that call?
Right.
And then, uh, it's a notify, so we're not notifying in the.
We're not gonna notify.
Twenty-four hours.
Provided, I mean, we can find a contractor, come up with a solution.
Right.
And I'm still hearing that we will, this will be based on complaint basis? Cause that generally deal with nuisance.
I think it needs to be on complaint base, all these guys are driving around, writing down addresses.
Thank you, sir.
If you do that, you might as well shovel them.
Can we put out a notice that just reminds people that they can put in a word to the city when they see that? Cause I think, I think the, the twenty-four hour policy has been put out there, but I don't think people read the whole paragraph sometimes, that says like, you could be fined.
Well, having it enforced, that's why they, they can ignore it.
Right, and so now, if we just put it out there, like, hey, in addition to our policy, this is what's gonna happen. Put it on our page, put it on all of our outlets.
Is, uh, is scheduled, is that like, do you have that, I mean?
I suppose, probably, yeah.
Depending on how we decide.
Yeah, cause that was, that was not on that, that sheet that we had, or that, that we.
That we just went through.
Yes.
We, we could add it in the nuisance section, based on whatever contractor we get with pricing. We'll have to wait and see what that is.
So, you guys are gonna hammer something out, and maybe we'll bring it to us next, next roundup or something?
We'll put our brains together.
Is there a way, uh, you were saying, that if the city calls for the, you know, the hours from the eight-thirty to four-thirty? You mean, like, I'm typically at work right about three, and I have hours worked by five o'clock, if it's a good day.
Yeah.
Is there a way, something on the website to say, here's a nuisance complaint form?
There, there is a spot on there that you can, um, submit, any, like, you can do questions, or if you have a complaint, there is a spot on there that you can send an email, yep.